All this work session received counsel's order, the application given by Mr. Kennedy and pledge led by Mr. Gary Stewart.
Almighty God would give you thanks and praise for your great goodness towards us. We ask you be with the mayor, I'm sorry, the council this evening as they go about the public business, lead, guide, and direct them. We also ask your special graces on our neighbors and the Carolinas who are about to undergo serious weather problems, be with their public safety employees and utility employees and all people of that region during this serious event. These things we ask in Jesus Christ name. Amen.
Amen. I plead with the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
for Susan Webb. Now is the time and place for public hearing and application of Susan Webb in business as Jackson Events for alcohol license. Mr. Phillips, will you share the particulars, please?
The applicant is Susan Webb, legal business name Jackson Events LLC. License is a special events retail, seven days or less. The location is the parking lot adjacent to the Comax building located at 134 East Peachtree Street. There was no record indicated on the background investigation. Five businesses and three residents were surveyed, no objections. The nearest church and school footage requirements are met. License application is in order. Health, fire, and building inspections comply and zoning verification comply.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Are those here in support of this application? Those in support? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Are those here opposed to this application? Anyone here opposed to this application? This hereby closes the public hearing and application of alcohol license for Miss Susan Webb. We will have another public hearing at the council meeting here in just a few minutes. Next is discuss tourism grant application for Scottsburg Barbecue Cookoff. You have a copy of the application in your packet. Any discussion? This application is an amount of $5,000. This would be out of the Tourism Fund. I believe last year they asked for receipt for $3,000 for this event.
Tony, I'd like to add, Vicki, Gunnerford is not doing their barbecue cookoff this year and we're going to be the third leg of the Alabama BBQ Trail, correct?
Yes. Triple Crown, which means they last event will be elegant until everyone will be here to receive their Triple Crown award, which means the people that cook all three, have to cook in all three in order to be a winner. So we should have a team's official issue because last year it kind of almost fell. So we're looking for a team's this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? We'll put this on the work session or the council meeting for this evening. Next is discuss tourism grant application for Scottsburg High School band boosters. This is a band competition. I believe they had this last year. This will be your second annual event right there. Last year they asked for and received $2,000. They have asked for $3,000 this year. Ms. Pat, you want to tell us a little bit about your view?
Sure. I did want to update you. Last year we had 11 registered bands. This year we surpassed that already. We have another month worth of registration to go, so we are absolutely expecting at least 20 this year. We do have judges that are interested in staying in our hotels this year and is it a band director possibly? Is it constructed band director? Yes. So we're looking for it to be more of a success this year than it was last year.
Any questions or discussion? We'll put this on this evening also.
Okay, thank you.
Next is discuss advertising for engineering services for airport grants. Normally, what the mayor is going to have, but you have a copy of a letter and information in your packet. Any discussion or comments regarding this? Leonard, are you here somewhere? Do you have anything that you want to offer to the council?
Do you have any questions, Tony?
No, it's our duty. You might have any questions.
It's 100% correct.
We'll put that on this evening. Next is discuss lumber proposal for Goose Pond Island. Mr. Smith and I had the opportunity to visit the island. Mr. Smith, you want to speak to this?
They have done a cutting. I forget how many years ago. And they took us to those locations where they did, showed us why they did what they did. Of course, first was the money. The second was to spread things out where the trees could grow better. And those areas that show, they showed us that the trees look really good. They took us to the other areas where there were a lot of pine trees and I wondered why they didn't cut those or any of those. And they said at the time they did first cut it, these trees were too small, weren't big enough around, so they left them out, which is what they said they would do here. So that it does what they did and that showed to be true. And then they took us to places where you couldn't even get to, they were so big. And then they took us to places where they had cedar trees and hardwood trees and all of them. We did a lot of riding and I don't know if I really learned very much by looking at a bunch of trees, but I did learn one thing. There's all kinds of roads, overrode, that go into that place. And with just a minimal amount of work, this is a side from trees, cutting and stuff, a minimal amount of work, we could have probably the premier track for across-country running of anybody in the state of Alabama. Because you could, it could go for miles or several miles just by resurfacing and finishing the road to the center. Because we were able to drive on that road, so we're thankful. And that impressed me and stuck with me that, because one of them, the guy that was driving immediately, I mentioned that, that it would make a good track and it would, but anything we've got now or anyone else, I respect. And a lot of scenery was all there. There's everything out there in SWV Island. So we have, we have something that most people in the state of Alabama can't come close to on that island, so we need to take care of it. But I appreciate, appreciate her taking us on that ride.
I also, Mr. Smith, my position, not only now, but has always been that, you know, the amount of money is, and I don't mean to make it sound like the money isn't the thing, but you know, the amount of money we're talking about is a significant amount. My concern is more the condition that we will leave the property in once, once the project is finished. And what I would like to see is improvement of the roads. I'm protective of, of the island portion of that property out there. It's difficult to get to. My concern was, you know, getting equipment in and out of there would do damage to that area. The provider that we were with had said that they would make improvements to that once the cut was done. They will crush a rock there and, and make a nice long bridge across that. They also talked about, and I think Scotty's here, maybe on that island, upping the requirement. So, you know, maybe not cutting as, as much on that, on that island to preserve some of the, some of the timber that is there. I think there is something that needs to be done in order for the, for the forestry portion to stay, to stay healthy. Keith and I saw a lot of downed trees, a lot of trees that have disease and rot. And we talked about the fact that if you leave that in there, it can spread to other, other timber there. So like I said, my main concern is improving the access, the roads in there. It's in a condition right now, quite frankly, we have ignored that resource. One of, a number of resources that in my opinion we haven't, we haven't taken care of the way we should. I would think that any profit that came out of adding the timber in that area should be put back into the maintenance of, of that area. But you know, this, this provider has said that they will put in writing that, you know, they will do some improvements to the roads and things out there. And I think it's a valuable resource for the, for the city. I think not only cross-country track, but I think there's a multitude of opportunities for outdoor activities there. Anybody else have any input?
I don't think Mr. Keller and poor Scotty for the time that they spent out there and looking at that and trying to work something out with us. But I'm, I'm of the opinion that we got an analysis from Lynn Washington, our forester, and I think we need to go with that plan. And when we do decide to do something with it, we need to bid it out and let a timber consultant come in and bail the job. So that's, that's all.
Can I ask you, a timber consultant, normally you'd have to pay for those services.
Yeah, we, we just have to get a price from them. Just like once they come in and do, you know, when they get the, get the actual analysis from Lynn, we get prices on what they can deal out before we agree with anything.
And I would, I would speculate, because this is the first time we've looked at this, that the cost of an independent consultant, you would basically not take any profit out of that.
We're just having to look.
Anybody else? We will set this for another work session. I'd like to get something writing. Ms. Phillips, we, we had offered for other providers to give us unsolicited proposals. Did anyone give us, bring us anything back?
When we made that offer, we, the only bottom, we didn't make that offer.
They were here at the, at the work session that night.
Talking about this, they were here. Just one other one.
There were two other people here that night. And this was an unsolicited proposal and we, we told them that, you know, anyone is welcome to, to make an unsolicited proposal to the, to the council as far as that's considered. We gave them the go-ahead that they could go out and look at the island and make a, and make offer. We never, we haven't heard anything from them thus far. Moving on, next is discuss parking lot, our parking on Broad Street between Willow and Laurel Street. Since the last time we discussed it, I, I visited the area. I said last time that I believe that the, that the practical proposal of parallel parking on one side, it made the most sense to me. The question was asked is which, which side of the street would you do the parallel parking? After going back and looking at it again, and again, I'm, I'm open to either way, but if you're coming off the square, it's kind of a straight shot down the, down the side where Payne's is, coming off of Willow Street, if you're coming away from Unclaimed Baggage, if you're coming from Unclaimed Baggage, you've got to make a turn there. I think from an angle standpoint, that, that's what makes the most sense to me. But again, I'm, I'm open to either one. Anybody else have any discussion or anything they'd like to offer there?
If, if we do one side or the other, or whatever we're going to do, is he going to make that much improvement already?
I guess what I'm trying to say is, why not just leave it alone? Having lost the porch, it's going to cost a lot of money in the middle of the park, is that correct?
I don't think that's true. I think, I think doing a parallel parking on one side is basically restriking the parking spaces. What costs a lot of money was if we were going to make it one-way going towards Willow Street because the, the switch, you know, the red light there has to be redone because that's a state highway.
But I, I worry about everything that, everything costs a lot of money. Same to me. And what I'm really concerned about is we keep talking about we've lost parking spots on the square. We're losing parking spots over here. We're going to make a parking lot across Willow Street next to the prime shop. And I'll be frank with you, I've been working with the traffic in this town because as a police chief for 36 years, a policeman, I've seen these parking lots built and we built a bunch of them. And I've tried to search, but I've never seen anybody parking it. Because people in their world will not walk a block to go into somebody's road store without, without parking. And so it may be the best thing we ever did, or it may be a lot of money spent for nothing. And I guess if we're going to do the parking lot, why not do it first, see if people use it before we lose any parking spots on, on that one block? It's just something different and that doesn't cost anything.
Well, I think the, I think the challenge is that that is tight, tight, tight through there with the park. Did they change the angle of that at some point, Chief?
At some point, they changed it from parallel parking to the diagonal.
And is it now?
When did they do it?
Don't know. It was, it was back when they redesigned the square back when Shag was over the street. Long time.
I will say that if there are vehicles parked on both sides of the street and you have traffic meeting each other in that, in that area, it is virtually impossible to, for, for traffic to negotiate that area. And something else that I realized and, you know, it just dawned on me, driving that, that area is that is the only side street coming off the square, if I'm not mistaken, that has able parking.
Yes.
I mean, every other, every other entrance and exit to the square is parallel parking on both sides. So here again, I, I just think it makes it real tight. It was brought to the council to do something about it. Again, as I said then, I'm really not sure how, how it got here, but we have been asked to make a, to make a call. Anybody else have anything to offer?
My only thought is, if you're talking about over there by the post office, there's not any, I guess, real businesses other than they have a parking lot across the street. There are businesses out there and kind of where you're thinking about changing those. Another thing, you don't have any people to park around. Robert, you had a question one time, or I guess I had a question. What, how would that affect you or your business on that side? It was one-way?
If it was one-way, it would be head to mouth to us. If it was coming off the square, if there's one way to coming in there, if you could not go north, it would be head to mouth.
It would affect you?
Terrible. You've already closed across the street on the other side of the, so you're basically just isolating the three businesses, the whole businesses everywhere.
Something concerning.
If it was originally done, it was one way coming into the square. Is that right, Mr. Park?
No.
It was changed.
We've had a busy section since 1958 and it really was never a problem with the parking until city council decided maybe 40 years ago or more that we needed to gain a few spaces. And they actually changed the angle on the park, made it a little, a little steeper. And, but it's, in my memory, since we had sort of did it in the sort of January 58th and it was good way then and it was angle parking on both sides.
So at that time, it was a, it was more of a drastic angle than?
Yes, it was flat, you know.
Yes.
But we kicked the two, three spaces when they made it a little steeper and that's what started the park.
Maybe that's what we need to look at, going back to.
We looked at that already.
You have? And?
It helped much because you, what happened, you get the big trucks up there, some of them not pulling to the curb, you know, and they're sticking out. You're still going to lose a couple of spots when you change the flatter angle. You're going to lose spots on either side of it. But if it helped, it helped minimal on that.
You don't have to worry about speed if you know the traffic is. And we've never had, we've never had them block down where traffic couldn't move. So it's a little inconvenience to the people who have to wait while they're there for a long throw in that somewhere. But yet, wait on this hour, somebody used to do it. So it's negotiable. People work it. Back when in 58, they didn't have, they didn't feel it was nearly like it is now. People didn't run the law.
A little different.
The size, I'm there every day, 10, 12 hours a day, is the size of vehicles and people not pulling all the way up to the curb or the prime problems. But what's really been interesting to me, I guess there are more, it seems like there are more police calls answered that involve the car coming, patrol car coming right through there than I ever imagined. Almost every day I hear a siren go by making you a left or a right on the Willow. And you can never imagine that many calls are answered right at that place. And if I said, "Chief, count it out," that seems to be a hot zone for an officer trying to get to a call. So to get stuck there and be trying to answer a call could be an issue. But it's, I think it's the size of vehicles and not going up the curb.
And that was going to be my question, Chief, is, is how many accident reports do we have in that?
Surprisingly not. If, if any, it's just little fender benders. What the problem is, if you've got a truck parked diagonally on this side and then another part diagonally on this side, there's no room. There's room for one car to go through. So people have to wait and one goes and it takes them.
Put you a simple sign that no loading truck, no beauty truck, she's stuck right there in that area.
Do you have any recommendations, Chief?
My, my recommendation would be to make parallel parking on the northbound side. You're losing what, four or five?
Four spaces if you, it doesn't matter which side you make a parallel parking. If you do go to parallel parking on one side, you lose four, you lose four parking spaces. Well, I think we've talked about it a number of times. I think if nobody has any objection, I think we should put it on, on the agenda for tonight. Either vote it down and link it to where it is or move forward. So we'll put this on the agenda for this evening. Next is discuss fire department budget amendment. Chief, I'm going to answer for you.
Yes, sir. I'll be, I'll be brief. As you're aware, for the past several years, mid-budget or so, the city council has kind of considered capital expenditures for departments and we did not do that this year. One of the things we were looking for and needing to replace is an extrication tool or a doll's life brand name. So like I said, we didn't, we didn't bring that up mid-budget, but I did in the last few weeks become aware of a demo set that had been used at trade shows and the like that we could get ahold of for, and these quotes are in a package, should be in your packet and three pages, for about $10,000 less and this price of new set. So, excuse me, it's, it's a newer technology tool. It's a lot easier on two people, which is, we're looking at a station, house number three out of Clemens Road. They work a lot of reps on 35 where we'll have access, probably get backup to them. These tools are a lot easier for two guys to deploy, a lot less strenuous, I guess, on them as far as just operating the tool, gives them some more, more time and energy to focus. And the maintenance cost on the annual of those is considerably cheaper. So what I would like to request is, you can see the quote for a demo set and then this is the third page will be a quote for a new in the box set, just for comparison purposes. I'd like to request a budget amendment for a capital expenditure in the amount of $26,861 to acquire that, excuse me, that set of tools. And then obviously, if I have any questions, I'd be happy to do my best to answer those.
Any questions?
That was the demo set you quoted.
Demo set was the cheaper, $26,861. I think it just maybe cut, yes, we can. This is over the bid limit. These tools are available on our purchase and cooperative since we agreed to earlier this year or last year. And I feel like in this case, we have a similar set already for like and ease of use and familiarity. I feel like it's justified to go with the purchase cooperative to keep our tools consistent.
As long as the purchase cooperative?
Yes, sir.
Chief, what are you going to do with your older?
My intent is to cycle things through. We like to keep a backup of everything. So we'll cycle things through, find our oldest set and then surplus those through you and So, uh, these are things that are meeting national standards and we're able to do it with about a five thousand dollar local match, uh, and as, as we get closer to that, my intent is to ask you guys for it or if, uh, things are tight, uh, we'll look at maybe some of this surplus things we're selling or whatever and just go for that.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate the work that you guys do.
Thank you, sir.
Next is, uh, discuss resolution to warbid for HVAC units introduced upon civic center. Uh, Ms. Feld, if you wanna go over that for us?
We posted one bid, no four bids, and received two bids for two HVAC units at the civic center. Central air conditioning service bid twenty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and Southern Heating and Cooling bid twenty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars. It's recommended that the bid be awarded to Southern Heating and Cooling as the lowest responsible bidder.
Any questions, comments?
I spent about an hour with the people at Southern, they, they explained to me how they were able to purchase this equipment cheaper than the person who bid high. Uh, they have a, uh, one, one of the things, main thing that it is, the two units are purchased, but it paid part of the city to cut for it. That way it impacted by. They, they get, they install them and they get the debt from the cost of the city and the, from the, uh, uh, they say, they say that they're Scottboro, they're, they have Scottboro, so they're making a profit, they're gonna be profitable. Uh, they're very impressed and, uh, I think they, they're gonna try to.
Anybody else? We'll put this on this evening. Next is, uh, discuss resolution to surplus, uh, recreation department property. You have this in your packet. This is a gas heater, is that correct, Ms. Feld? Any questions or comments regarding this? We'll put the surplus of this equipment on tonight. Next is, uh, discuss changes to local, uh, subdivision, uh, site plan regulations. Uh, Mr. Patrick Stewart and myself have been exchanging emails with, uh, uh, Mr. Little and Mr. Hartman, uh, this, uh, the last week or so. Um, I have a, an email from, from Mr. Hartman. Uh, I, I think, uh, I won't go into details on, on, uh, our entire email exchange, but Mr. Hartman points out that he believes in order to do anything to our local regulations that, uh, they would need to have the public here to, uh, have a planning commission meeting. Um, and I, I would like to request, uh, request that they, uh, do so in regards to, uh, in regards to this. Um, we, we sent this, I guess about four and a half to five months ago, uh, to them. Uh, it was a little confusing, the wording that we sent and, uh, I apologize, uh, for that. Uh, it's been four and a half months. We, you know, we'd like to see the planning, uh, commission have a, have a meeting, uh, this following month and, and talk about this and, and between that and then we can, we can, uh, talk about specifics as, as far as what we want. But Mr. Kenner has informed me, um, that we have to allow them to, uh, go through their process and, and give us their opinion, uh, back before we can take any, uh, take any actions. So, um, I will say that, um, as I have said before, that, and I, I looked it up today, the average person in the city of Scottsboro has an average yearly income of just under twenty-three thousand dollars a year. The average household income, uh, is in approximately thirty-six thousand dollars a year. You compare that to a community such as Madison, and I pulled the data on Madison today, uh, the average household income in the city of Madison is ninety-four thousand five hundred and so on dollars. So, you know, we, we have, and I don't think it's a secret that, that, you know, a lot of our, uh, planning regulations are modeled similar to Madison. So we are modeling our regulations, uh, around the municipality that has an average household income that is approximately two and a half times, uh, what the average household income in the city of Scottsboro is. Um, I think that that has a detriment, uh, effect to our average citizen. I think that, uh, you take a family of, of, uh, thirty-six thousand dollars a year and, you know, they have children and things, I think we put them in a, a situation where it's hard for them to have quality entry level housing. Um, and, uh, I, I think that it's something that we need to look at and I think it's stopping our, our growth here. And I think that our average citizens deserve a, um, quality, safe environment, uh, to live. So I, I hope to, in the next week, um, clarify, uh, for, for, uh, for the planning, planning commission what exactly we're, we're looking for and I look forward to their, uh, opinion and input on how we can address this issue. Anybody else have anything to offer?
You must think about something. If it takes that long for them to do that, you and I will be, we only have a month and a half left. So if they, if they drag their feet, it'll be up to the, the ones that are here now and the ones that are coming on, uh, to take this seriously if we're, do something about.
Next is, uh, discuss Clemens Road project. Um, I just received an email, uh, from the mayor, um, the Clemens Road project is slightly over budget. Um, this information that's in our packet is a little different. You know, you'll have to apologize for, for a moment. Uh, Mr. Little, I believe there's a match on, on this overage, is that correct?
Eighty-twenty.
Yeah, so, so the state's gonna pick up eighty percent of the cost. What is, what is the amount that, that the project is gonna be? What is our portion of the overage at this point?
We're looking at, we're running about fifteen thousand projected over right now. So...
For our, for our match?
No, that's the total.
That's total?
So twenty percent of that.
Okay, so about three thousand dollars. Okay, so we're about three thousand dollar over budget. However, uh, one of the things that was done, uh, widening of that road, uh, was narrowed down due to some costs and concerns and, and where is that structure, which led from Bruce?
Bruce down to the end.
Down to the, the Sportsman Landing.
Sportsman Landing, correct.
Right, so they're, they chose not to widen that part.
Correct.
If we wanted to go back, well, when they, when they did the, when they bid out the project, right? Uh, so to widen that part, it's still an eighty-twenty match?
Still is, correct.
Right, and what is the, what is the projected portion that we would be looking at?
About eight thousand dollars to widen it.
So for another eight thousand dollars, uh, we could, we could widen that road all the way to Sportsman Landing.
Correct.
Correct. So this was, this was a state, uh, project, right, that they did the, and when did they slim that part?
Well, we, we looked...
To Mr. Smith's question.
Well, we looked at the budget all along. You got that, we get estimates every month what the budget is and, you know, the big payout was asphalt, which started last week, you know, and that may be a little bit over when we get down to the end of the tonnage. But we just talked periodically, hey, we're, we're running a little bit over budget, let's look at ways to stay within the budget and one of the ways was to, to take and widen it out. So that's what we looked at doing, uh, from Bruce down to Sportsman Landing, which the traffic count down that way is not as, as high because a lot of the traffic comes down and...
Spits off.
Spits off and everything, so that's what we looked at doing, but if we're gonna do it now, it's the time to do it because we'll, if we don't do it now, we'll, you know, of course the project never be done.
Well, may I ask what caused us to go over again on this project? Why, why did we go over?
Well, you're looking at the, the drainage structure, we're looking at a box cover. Uh, you and I talked about it Friday.
Yeah, we, we talked about that and, and my understanding at that time was the reason it took the, the widening of the road back is because you're having to do this cover and you started to take it out and it just kind of crumbled and you had to do the whole thing, so you just took the widening of the road out. And it seems like a, a lot of asphalt and a lot of road could be taken out for just one, one, maybe not a little cover, big cover. And, and my, my concern is everybody from that, where we, Bruce, I say, Bruce is where you started, the name of the street, down to Sportsman Landing, every one of those people and everyone all around there probably placed some of the highest property taxes of, of anybody in the city of Scottsboro. And, and that road is more, is narrower than it's supposed to be, is that correct?
For traffic count, it's not, but...
I'm, I'm not talking about just for a regular sized road, just...
Two cars been traveling on it for years.
Uh, that sounds like a rough, the street road over here, but that, we're talking about doing it too. I'm just concerned that those people have lived there forty years, fifty years and they've, they've had their road paid. Finally, we promised them we're gonna do it and then we'll do a cover, so we take it away from them. And to me, they have as much right to get their road paid as everybody from Lakeside, Lakeside or wherever we started this project, all in, but yet we took it away from them. And I don't think it's fair to them that we did that. And if it, I, I really, I hate to be the one to say we need paying this extra money because we, I'm the one that's fussing about paying this extra money every project we do. And, but these people deserve it and, and maybe we could find some way, I don't know, I, I, it's exactly that, nothing seems to go right on our project. Uh, this is just a simple matter of paving the street and we had to take it off to do a cover. That's, to me, that's cutting a project that big, a million something dollars, too fine. They're okay with that.
Can I ask you a question because I might be confused? But I don't think we're saying that you're not gonna pave that area, right?
Now, we take it.
We're saying we, they're, they're saying that they chose not to widen the road in that area.
I didn't...
It would still, it would still be resurfaced, correct?
Right. They just asking for a pocket?
I'm not disagreeing with you because I think we should, I think we should widen that area also.
We promised them.
But I'm glad that this is being recorded so I can say that Mr. Smith, uh, requested that we spend extra money.
I, I haven't requested anything. I'm just having a conversation.
Josh, I got a question, I got a question. How wide is the narrow response?
Fifteen feet when you go down from campground to the Sportsman Landing. I think there's about six houses from that point down, maybe, maybe eight. There's, there's four on each side, but from, from campground back to Bruce, it's seventeen feet wide.
But you also might want those?
Yeah, you got people going down there using that.
So the, the options are if we, uh, if we do the adjustment, will be a, it'll be a three thousand dollar budget amendment. If we choose to widen it the entire, uh, length, it'll be eleven thousand dollar budget amendment. Is that correct?
Something like that, probably. And again, the, the asphalt, if we come in ten tons over or fifteen, it's eighty dollars a ton, you know, you're looking a little bit more there on adjustments, but that's correct. We're probably looking at fifteen, twenty thousand or over front.
If you don't come home something in.
We don't come home something in a place. We're down the end, so maybe we won't.
Well, maybe that's where I'm gonna step in and say something now. Uh, running to something else, I, I spoke to a concerned citizen that lives on Clemens Road and, uh, apparently there's several houses, I guess after you turn onto Clemens Road, as you go down the road, done a real good job doing the ditches all the way down, but when it gets down to the curb area, um, I know there's several houses on the left that have normally tended to flood in bad flood time at just their backyards. But their, the asphalt there is three inches higher now, is what they're saying.
Yeah.
What he told me and, uh, and that the drains there is not good at all. Um, they're really, um, they're really, really concerned about flooding and actually flooding enough to get into their houses.
Yeah.
So that was something that was brought up to me and I talked to him at length about it and, um, there, there are several people through there that are concerned about this. And I know that would be, to do more work will cost them more money, but I believe we also owe it to them to make sure that it's at least not as, uh, any worse than it is was before we did the road.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure we all heard that and understood, uh, it's not a good situation for them, they're very, very concerned about it.
Mr. Kenner, is there a, uh, is there action that the council needs to take in order to, uh, give, give the project the, the red light to, to move forward with widening that portion of the road?
Uh, at this stage, we're not certain what the budget amendment would be because as Mr. Little said, though we're close to the end, we do not know exactly how much asphalt is concerned. Uh, so I would recommend that you, he has done what the council, various council members have requested, inform the council, provide information to the council if there is going to be any kind of overage. He has done that here, uh, but we don't know the exact amount yet and when you get the exact amount, I think that would be the appropriate time to take action.
With my understanding and my conversation with you, we have to give an answer about tomorrow.
Well, if I, they're, they got rained out today, so...
They have to tomorrow.
They have to tomorrow, we need to tell them. They got the widening machine down there, if they're gonna do it, we need to, you know, do it this week. Why don't?
That changes the...
Yeah.
So let's, let's put that on this evening, I'll, I'll look for a council member to make a, make a motion for a budget amendment, whether to move forward, um, with the, with the adjustment for the widening from Bruce to Sportsman Landing or to, uh, or move forward with widening that, that portion of the, of the road.
What may be, these things do a three percent contingency or a two percent contingency, you know, of the total budget, where that would come up to, I think three percent, it's like thirty-nine thousand or, or two percent, you know, of the budget.
Josh, I have a question. On the, I know during the meeting that we had, I asked how many culvers there were that were going to be placed and it was thirteen. Was this Masonry Box Colbert one of the thirteen or's?
It wasn't, it wasn't. We was extending it out, widening it out and it was an issue, right?
Okay, we'll put this on, uh, this evening's agenda. All right, does that guy's, uh, report to be given after council meeting? We're gonna take about a five minute recess and we'll reach the venue for council meeting.